Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this planning commission meeting to order and thank everyone for calling in. As always, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. So I'll ask you all to rise and face the flag. As I plead us in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and can we have a roll call, please?
Sure thing. So, Commissioner Magai is absent. Commissioner Keldorf?
Here.
Commissioner Heschler?
Here.
Vice Chair Newman?
Present.
Chair Baldino?
Here. Thank you, Eduardo. Next on the agenda, public communications. Are there any written communications that weren't provided to us in the agenda packet?
Uh, no, there are no, no, no communications.
Okay. Well, written communications. Is, is there anyone on the line that you think is here for public comments?
No, there are, there are a lot of names that we can do our, our usual, um, make an announcement. Whoever wishes to speak, we will, uh, give you a few seconds to unmute yourself.
So this is the time for anyone wishing to make comments for something not on the agenda. Correct? All right, seeing no one raise their hand or unmute themselves, I'll go ahead and close the public communications. That brings us to the consent calendar. Uh, we have one item on the consent calendar. It's the expansion of a recreational vehicle storage facility at One Chapman Way. Does anyone on the dais wish to pull this and have a presentation or have any questions? No? Okay, well, if not, I'll take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Summer.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks. And can we have a roll call on that, please?
Good thing. Um, Commissioner Keldorf?
Aye.
Commissioner Heschler?
Aye.
Vice Chair Newman?
Yes.
Chair Baldino?
Aye. So it's approved. Thank you. All right, that brings us on the agenda to new business. Uh, we're hearing a presentation regarding development of a local inclusionary housing ordinance slash program. And I believe this is just a receive and stop file, right? We're not being asked to actually take any action or vote on anything, correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So, uh, without further ado, who will be giving the presentation?
Um, I will introduce briefly, uh, um, our consultant, uh, from a company named EPS. Uh, Julie Cooper, along with, uh, Darren Smith, who will be making the presentation tonight. Uh, just as an introductory comment, uh, you're very familiar with, uh, the fact that we're working on updating our housing elements and, uh, the city is dealing with a lot of, uh, housing issues and undertaking a lot of efforts to promote, uh, more housing construction and addressing housing needs in town. Um, one way is to, uh, help make progress on those needs and on those goals is through potentially, uh, adopting an inclusionary housing ordinance. And we've been working with EPS for the last couple of months or so, uh, doing some research, research, and, uh, EPS will kind of do an introduction for the planning commission on what inclusionary housing ordinances are and, uh, tell you a little bit about what other cities are doing in this area and then take some questions and have a discussion. And with that, I will hand it off to, uh, Darren and Julie.
Hey, thank you very much. Again, my name is Darren Smith with Economic and Planning Systems. That's what EPS stands for. We've been around since nineteen eighty-three, working on, uh, land use planning and economic, uh, development consulting throughout California and the United States, uh, for almost forty years now, and have worked on inclusionary housing standards, uh, in California and again throughout the nation, uh, for almost that long. Uh, Julie Cooper is here with me this evening. She's the director of our Los Angeles office and she'll be doing the bulk of the presentation. But just by way of introducing, uh, myself and our firm, uh, again, we've done these, uh, studies all over the state, um, for many years. We know that there's, uh, concerns and questions about them from, uh, stakeholders and the building industry and so forth. Uh, and we welcome that conversation, uh, regarding what inclusionary housing might mean for you. And so with that, I'll turn in the, uh, presentation over to Julie and I will be here, uh, to assist with commentary and questions as she goes through it. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Darren. I'm going to attempt to share my screen. Uh, hopefully everyone can see this presentation. Yes, thumbs up. Cool. Thank you. Um, so, uh, as Darren said, we are, um, and as Paul said, we are here to, um, sort of provide an overview of what is, uh, what are inclusionary housing programs and what is the work that we are doing for the city in studying the potential of developing such a program for El Segundo. So just to start again, what is inclusionary housing? So an inclusionary housing program is a city program or a municipal program that has a requirement on a new residential development to provide a certain percentage of the units, a certain percentage of your market rate units as affordable. And a couple of slides will talk about what does affordable mean, but just generally that's the concept behind an inclusionary housing program, that you have a market rate development and it's providing a certain number of units as affordable to certain income level, uh, households earning certain income levels. So why have an inclusionary housing program? So, um, because these are units that are built as other new residential units are being built, it's a way that you can grow your affordable housing inventory as your overall housing inventory, uh, is growing as well. It's also a way to promote equity by providing housing at a range of price points that allow a diversity of household types to afford to live in your community. And as I'm sure you're all very familiar with, because of the housing element process, there are, you know, standards and, uh, regulations from the state regarding regional housing needs, um, allocations, RENA numbers, um, and other requirements that seek to help cities plan for housing and income diversity in their community. Um, another reason that it's, um, you know, uh, desirable to promote the development of affordable housing is that it can provide housing for members of your workforce, your local workforce, that could not otherwise afford to live in the community. And so is, uh, really, it can be really beneficial from a traffic standpoint, from an environmental standpoint, and helping people to live closer to the places where they work. So in doing this inclusionary housing program study, there are several questions that we're looking to answer. Uh, the first kind of most fundamentally is what type of requirement could the city potentially have on new development? And as I'll talk about in a few slides, there are several elements that go into the inclusionary requirements, the proportion of units, the income level that you're looking to serve, um, and, you know, various elements like that. One, one question or one, um, e- elements that can help inform this requirement is understanding what are some other jurisdictions doing kind of in the neighborhood? And so we'll show again in a few slides, what types of inclusionary housing programs exist in several other cities in Los Angeles County? And, um, sort of to Darren's point, there are, um, dozens and dozens of cities throughout the state of California that have inclusionary housing programs. We wanted to focus in on just a few that are sort of most maybe quote unquote peer to El Segundo, um, to again, give you some local regional context on what other cities in the, in the, uh, region are doing. Um, the next question that we look at, you know, sort of as we're iterating on this study is what does the im- what is the impact of an inclusionary requirement on the economics of new market rate housing development? And again, as we'll talk about, um, in a few slides, we'll explain how we're going to be doing this analysis to understand what are those impacts? What are those impacts on the feasibility of new development and how can the city sort of try to balance these different forces? Um, that are at play here. Another aspect of a inclusionary housing program is, um, the option, a pot- potential aspect is the option to pay an in lieu fee. So as opposed to providing units onsite, the proportion of units, a developer in some cases, if the city allows it, could pay a fee that would go towards supporting the development of these units elsewhere in the city. Um, and there are sort of various benefits to having such, um, a fee option. It allows the city an opportunity to sort of build up a fund that they can then utilize, um, in supporting affordable housing developers who may be building a hundred percent affordable projects. Um, and in some cases can actually, um, result in more overall units than when you have, um, onsite development. Again, just depending on how the, the program is set up. And so this is another part of the program that the city could consider including. And it can be sort of, you know, the way you calculate the fee, there's different approaches, whether or not you're very restrictive in allowing a developer to pay the fee or very permissive, um, there's a range of options there. Um, and one of the considerations around that is sort of this last question here, which is whether or not the city's priority would be to get onsite units built that are affordable or to be able to collect fee revenue to again leverage in supporting, um, affordable development elsewhere in the city. And so these are all considerations that we'll be looking into and talking about with stakeholders, with this group, with the city staff and the city council, and helping the city decide what it could potentially want its inclusionary housing program to look like.
And, and, and I'm sorry, Julie, I'm, I'm sure you'll get into this, but does this relate to both, uh, for sale and for rent product?
Yes, yes. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a couple of slides. Um, so to answer this question of what is affordable housing, and again, this may be something that's very familiar to this group because of the housing element process, um, you know, there are four kind of categories that we talk about when we talk about affordable housing. There's extremely low income, very low income, low income and moderate income. And these all relate to different percentages of the county median income or the area median income, in this case for Los Angeles County. Um, what we're showing here on the, in the table is just to give some context, what the city's six-cycle RENA numbers are within each of these categories. Um, now, RENA numbers don't actually go to extremely low income, which is thirty percent of AMI, but there are some cities that have, uh, requirements that, um, for units at that lowest affordability level. So just again, to provide some context. And what we're showing here is what the maximum income is for three and four-person households at these various income levels and what the maximum rent or for-sale product they could afford would be, given, um, their income level and given that the, um, standard for affordability is thirty percent of income to go towards, um, rent or housing costs, or in the case of low and moderate income, thirty-five percent of income. And so as you could see, the maximum rents that could be, um, afforded by low-income households ranges from eight hundred dollars a month for an extremely low-income household, up to over twenty-five hundred dollars a month for a moderate-income household, which is up to a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. By comparison, what we see in the El Segundo market is that a two-bedroom unit, which would accommodate a three-person household, for instance, um, new products, new projects are renting for, um, up, close to four thousand dollars a month. Um, so again, outside of the affordability for these different, um, household groups. Um, kind of looking at the for-sale side, we, um, we see that, again, given a for- given affordability, I'm sorry, given income levels, the affordable sale price, once you take into account, uh, mortgage and insurance and taxes, that, um, different, uh, income levels can afford range from somewhere around three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to, uh, almost seven hundred thousand dollars for a, uh, three-bedroom home, which would accommodate, let's say, a four-person household. Um, and again, what we are seeing sort of in El Segundo and the surrounding market is that, uh, you know, three-bedroom home, maybe a town home, um, is selling for over a million dollars. So, and again, this is new, looking at newer product, newer, uh, development. So we can see that there is definitely a situation where, um, what these different households can afford based on the standard affordability metrics is below what new, um, residential units are coming on the market priced at. So just to talk a bit about what are the different elements or the different considerations that go into creating an inclusionary housing program? Um, there are various, you know, there are various variables that cities can put together in creating these programs. The first, again, sort of most fundamental is what is the proportion of new units that would be affordable? So, um, as we'll kind of show on the next slide, this could range from five percent of units to twenty percent of units. There's a, a lot of, um, options there, and this all sort of then will feed into the feasibility analysis and thinking about what is the right proportion that would work in the city of El Segundo. And then there's the question of what are the income levels that we're, that the city is looking to serve? So this is going back to that extremely low, very low, low and moderate income housing love, um, sorry, uh, income levels. And a program can have a mix where it can be, you have to provide X percent at this income level and X percent at another income level, or it can have, um, options. So it's either, you know, five percent at very low or ten percent at low. So there is a lot of different ways that these can sort of be, uh, mixed and matched within, uh, an inclusionary program. There are options for, uh, cities to exempt certain types of developments or, you know, decide which types of development, um, does, is, uh, subject to the affordability requirement in which aren't. So for instance, maybe, uh, a minimum proj- project size, you know, projects that are less than three units wouldn't be, um, required to, to, um, provide the units or pay the fee. Or certainly often, if it's an actually is an affordable housing project, it won't also be, um, subject to the requirement. So there are some, um, options there where cities can make those differentiators. And to, um, the earlier question that was asked, in some cases, cities don't have requirements on for-sale projects, but they do have requirements on rental projects. So again, there's, um, some flexibility in that. Uh, we talked about the in-lug fee and that, you know, there can be, again, it can be restrictive or permissive. Um, and so again, sort of depending on what this, the city's priorities are, can help determine how you might structure an in-lug fee. And then, um, if rental and for-sale units would both be subject to the requirement, you can have different requirements for rental projects versus for-sale projects. And often we see this because, um, providing for sale, rental units at certain affordability levels may be feasible, but you can't really also provide for-sale units at the same affordability level, the same income level, just given the economics of for-sale development and for-sale pricing. And so sometimes the income levels in a, for a for-sale project may be higher, like a moderate income requirement versus for a rental, which might be a low or very low. So some flexibility in, um, the requirements for different types of projects. So a lot of stuff on this table, um, so I won't, you know, talk through it all in, in a lot of detail. But this again, as I said, is an example, is a sort of a sample of projects within Los Angeles County that have inclusionary housing programs. So, um, Santa Monica, Whittier, Long Beach, the city of LA, um, Montebello and Culver City. And so as you can see in this table, there's a pretty wide range of requirements. Um, you have a place such as, um, Santa Monica, which has, you know, twenty percent low income or ten percent very low income. Um, and then you have somewhere like Whittier, which has seven and a half percent very low income or three percent low income plus twelve percent moderate. And you can see also how there's this kind of and/or options where they can, where, um, developers can choose or may have to provide affordability at different levels. Um, also you can see there's a difference in some cases between the requirement for rental projects versus for-sale projects, um, whether or not there's an in-lug fee and when it can be used. And then in some cases, these, um, programs aren't necessarily, um, applicable citywide. Sometimes they may only be applicable in a certain part of the city, um, or in certain zones of the city. Culver City is one example actually where the inclusionary requirement is tied to a density bonus. So for pri- mixed-use projects that are utilizing a local density bonus, there is an inclusionary requirement that they have to meet in order to get that density bonus. So that's not the case in all programs, but that is another way that such a program can be structured. So now kind of getting into this question about how does, how do inclusionary programs affect development economics? So, um, the answer to whether or not these require, requirements impact feasibility is yes, they do. And usually, and this is really because particularly if you're providing onsite units, the cost of building those units is the same as the cost of building your market rate units, but you are selling or leasing them for a lower value. So that's going to affect the, you know, sort of revenue cost balance within your, uh, development pro forma. Some of the constraints that come up in terms of whether or not a project can, um, sort of bear the cost of having an affordable requirement have to do with the cost of land. So if the cost of land is high, um, if construction costs are high, um, if city requirements can be expensive, whether that's fees or whether the, the process for entitling a project is very lengthy, these are all things that add to the cost side. And then kind of on the things that sort of detract from the revenue side, maybe if the density allowance is low, so there's not, um, you can't build more units on a particular site, or if you're in a market where achievable rents are low, which is not so much the case in El Segundo, but certainly in other parts of the region. So, um, just the point that we would sort of take away from the fact that there are these different constraints is that, like I said, as I said, many, many communities, dozens of communities do have inclusionary housing programs. And over time, a real estate, real estate markets often adjust to the fact that there's a requirement. And so that will often come, you know, sort of be reflected, for instance, in, in land prices, um, or in other, you know, sort of, or in rents or in other aspects of this, this, this balance. But at the end of the day, there are limits to, you know, sort of how much the market will adjust in any particular, um, scenario. And so, or in any particular location. And so that's why we do this feasibility analysis to really understand like where, you know, where is the inflection point? Where is, you know, where do things start to, you know, get to the point where it really isn't something that could be feasible? Um, just given market conditions. So, um, the process that we're going through right now, the analysis that EPS is going through right now, is building, uh, several prototype development pro formas for both rental and for-sale residential products. Um, and we're trying to reflect what the city is expecting to see developed, um, in the future. So kind of aligned with some of the work that's being done on the housing element and thinking about what's coming, you know, in the future and sort of what's being developed in the, in the, has been developed in the near term. So on the multifamily rental side, we're going to be modeling the impacts of inclusionary requirements on, um, one-bedroom and two-bedroom rental units. And we're going to be doing this at three different density levels, thirty, forty and fifty units per acre. Again, knowing that this is sort of the initial conversation that's being had about, um, different zoning, um, allowances within the city. And this is, you know, again, our initial analysis. And so if the conversation changes, um, around, you know, the, the zoning allowances, there's, we can make adjustments so that the inclusionary program is reflecting that. Um, on the for-sale side, we're looking at both townhomes and single-family homes, um, at, you know, twenty units per acre for the smaller, uh, units and then ten units per acre for the larger units. And so again, this is built, you know, looking at, you know, what is typical, what are typical land costs? What are typical construction costs? Um, what's a return that a developer needs to make a project, you know, pencil? Um, or to go after a project or to get financing? And then what are the achievable revenues? And then once we layer in an inclusionary requirement at various percentages and, uh, income levels, um, what is the result of that on, um, the, the economics of the, sorry, the economics of the project?
Julie, can I ask a question?
Please.
Have you looked at the historical projects that have happened in El Segundo last ten years? Because I, I can't recall seeing a thirty-unit rental project come across this dais in the last thirteen years that I've been up here. So I don't understand the exercise of going through and modeling projections on projects based on land that we don't even have in our residential neighborhoods.
And if I could maybe, before you answer that kind of tag team a question, with the opposite end of the spectrum on that is that we know we have a project, at least an application that we expect seeing that's going to be over eighty units to the acre. So while it might not happen often, that's going to be the biggest bite at the apple. And so how would that get swept up in here? And is there a reason to incorporate a higher density actually model for that particular project?
Sure. Um, so I appreciate both of those questions. And Paul, um, definitely stop me if I start to say anything. That's not, um, correct. But, um, in terms of the, the, the density on sort of the thirty, forty, fifty unit per acre density, um, you know, we've been, um, again, corresponding with city staff and coordinating with the consultants that are working on the housing element. Um, and we understand that there is at least under consideration, um, some, uh, sort of overlay- some uh, sort of overlay uh, options that would allow for housing at these higher densities. Now, this is certainly densities that we see in other cities that are near El Segundo, even though as to your point, we aren't necessarily seeing it in El Segundo. But given what we know about housing pressures, about the housing market, we would not necessarily be surprised if, you know, such a pro, if such a density was allowed, that it would be possible that you would see a project of that density. We certainly can model projects at lower densities, but the inclusionary requirement would only be on new development. And so we wanna try to be a little bit um, predictive in terms of what might be coming down the road for new development in the city and reflecting the economics around that. Um, so hopefully that was correct. Um, in terms of the overlay zone, um, and then to the other point about higher densities, again, yes, we could model higher densities. Our understanding is that the project um, that you're referring to is definitely unique for El Segundo. It's um, very high density. That there's obviously much, as we're saying, about thirty, forty, fifty units. We, there's likely um, demand for even higher densities, eighty, ninety units an acre. What we, one thing that we've discussed with city staff that we may, um, that we wanna try to look at in our model is understanding that there's whether or not the city adopts a local density bonus, like what we talked about with Culver City, that has incentives, that has inquire, requirements that go with that local density bonus. At the end of the day, there's the state density bonus. And the state density bonus um, is uh, pretty generous, um, I would say, we would say. Um, and so what we are looking to do is think about an inclusionary requirement potentially where if a project was to meet that inclusionary requirement, it would automatically qualify for a state density bonus. In which case, if if it's fifty units per acre is the base density, then the allowed density with the bonus would be up towards that seventy-five, eighty units per acre. And so rather than start at that very high density, and then you could end up with a project that could be allowed to develop at a hundred and twenty units per acre. Um, once you layer in the state density bonus, we sort of, we're gonna start at this level again, where we know the city is already having conversations about what would be allowed in the overlay zone. So hopefully that addresses those questions. And Paul, feel free to contradict anything I just said.
Oh yeah, I won't contradict, but maybe I will summarize real quickly. So uh, when we had our discussion a couple of months ago, a- ago about the site inventory uh, for the housing element, um, you know, the options that we presented to the commission and the council were for certain uh, properties in the city to be, to get this uh, overlay, housing overlay, that would have uh, densities ranging from thirty units per acre to fifty units per acre. So that's partly the reason why we are uh, looking at that, uh, those numbers in our feasibility analysis right now. If uh, those, uh, if the densities in our housing element change, then we will adjust uh, the analysis for the uh, inclusionary housing program as well. And now with regard to the other project that we mentioned, just summarizing what Julie said. If uh, you have a project that come in, comes in at fifty units per acre, and they um, they also include uh, affordable units as a result of our inclusionary housing ordinance, they would qualify for the state's density bonus. So they, so they could add additional units above that maximum density. So you could end up with a project that is, you know, at the sixty, seventy or eighty units per acre as a result. So that's, I just wanted to quickly summarize what Julie said.
Paul, can you just remind me, is the state density bonus allowance, is it, I think it's up to thirty-five percent of the base density? What is that percentage increase?
It, it varies depending on the percentage of affordable units in a project and the level of affordability. So the higher percentage of affordable units, so if you get up to ten, fifteen or twenty percent uh, of affordable of units, and then the lower, the affordability level. So if you're, you have twenty percent affordable at the very low uh, income levels, then the density bonus that you qualify for shoots up. Uh, I don't have an exact number because it changes depending on all those factors. But it can go up to thirty-five percent or higher in certain cases.
Uh, Paul, and then this is Michael, Commissioner, just to also, you know, big, piggyback on that. Should a developer wish to maximize their density bonus using state law, they can get up to a fifty percent density bonus.
Good, thank you.
Um, so in terms of thinking about the different inclusionary requirement mixes or scenarios that, you know, we will model, you know, we've started with two initial scenarios, but expect to add um, at least a couple of more as we get, you know, feedback from you all and from stakeholders. Um, and as we sort of see the results of these initial scenarios. But the, the two first scenarios that we're running is um, a fifteen percent requirement that's split between low and very low income for rental and then between low and moderate for for sale housing. And this is sort of a model that we see in many other cities around the state. And so it's kind of like the, you know, very sort of middle of the road um, approach. And so that's kind of the starting point. And then we're also modeling a scenario that has ten percent very low, a ten percent requirement for very low income households for rental and fifteen percent for moderate income households for for sale units. And this actually is sort of, again, like in the middle of some of these LA county cities that we showed on the previous table, kind of a, a bit of an average among them. And so this is again, sort of our starting point. But we expect that there will be uh, other scenarios that we'll be modeling um, as we go through our analysis. And as I said, as we run these tests, we'll get a sense of what are the requirements that these, that new development can bear, given development costs and given the value of market rate and affordable units. So just to talk a little bit about next steps, um, so we are, as I said, continuing to refine our model, both the scenarios that we're running and the assumptions that are going into the model around costs and revenues. So um, we'll be looking for feedback on all of those. In terms of the model assumptions in particular, we are beginning to reach out to members of the developer community, both on the for sale, uh, sorry, both on the market rate and affordable side and the rental and for sale side, um, to sort of talk with them about what are they seeing in the market in terms of costs and revenues so that we can make sure that our model is, is reflective um, of their experience. You know, right now, we're using market data that we find in our own research, but we wanna make sure we're vetting those numbers. Um, and then we'll be running a first round of analysis using these assumptions and using these scenarios. And we'll be sharing those initial findings with um, city staff and then with the larger community. And so part of our scope of work is to um, to uh, do community outreach. And so it's sort of the next piece of that is going to be a public presentation to the community and targeted stakeholders, um, particularly those involved in housing development and housing advocacy, where we'll sort of recap some of the information we've shared with the commission tonight um, in terms of what is an inclusionary housing program, but then also share some of our initial findings and look to get a comment and feedback on the direction that we're um, gonna continue to go down in helping the city to craft um, a program. If that's the direction that they decide to go in, that you all decide to go in. So um, that concludes my presentation. Uh, so I am now hap- we're now happy to open it up to questions and discussion. Um, Darren, I don't know if you had any comments you wanted to make, um, sort of at the end, or we can just open it up?
Thank you. Um, i- if you wouldn't mind Julie going back to the slide showing what other communities are, are doing. The real takeaway here, we can get into the details at any time, but the real takeaway uh, here from my perspective is that there are essentially as many different ways to do this as there are communities who do it. Um, there's a lot of latitude in the law about how you can establish these uh, programs in the first place. So every, every jurisdiction tailors it to their own particular situation. Um, and you can see even from this half dozen communities in LA County that have these, that there's all kinds of ways, all, e- every aspect of the program that Julie mentioned, the proportion of units, the uh, incomes that are targeted and what kinds of projects have to pay them or provide them in the first place. All of those things are on the table essentially. So uh, we know that there can be a lot of iteration and a lot of consideration about what uh, you might be interested in. And we are here for that. Um, but just know that uh, there's a lot of leeway about uh, policy direction that you can take with this, uh, with relatively few legal limits um, regarding what you might wish to do. And so that, that's what's on the table for you. Including, of course, doing, uh, choosing not to do a program like this after all. Uh, many communities have them, over a hundred communities in California have them and have had them for thirty plus years. Um, but many communities look at it and decide that they don't. And we're here to help you um, make decisions that you feel are in the best interest of your community, including uh, how to get affordable housing, but also how to get housing period. And so that's where the feasibility consideration comes in. At what extent, uh, to what extent does a program potentially have detrimental effects on overall housing production? We don't wanna get to that point, certainly. So with that, uh, thank you for the opportunity to chime in there. Uh, and we welcome the discussion and, and any questions.
So there's no state mandate requiring the city to adopt an inclusionary housing program?
Absolutely not.
But, but instead you're helping us get to our RENA numbers by studying these.
If you, if you choose to follow this path toward your RENA numbers, it can certainly help to uh, address that. Otherwise, there are other ways that you can potentially get affordable housing built, but it requires uh, other sources of funding aside from leveraging the value of new market rate uh, housing. Um, and, and some of those are simply not uh, available in some communities. We have not yet looked at what other opportunities there might be to address affordable housing in El Segundo. This is the one that we've been retained to assist you with. But certainly the intent, as we understand it, is to help to deliver uh, affordable housing units at a variety of income levels other than market rate. And that can help you to address your, your RENA requirements.
So can, can you guys, uh, I'd love to hear your experience on this. I, I've always struggled with how this program works with for sale. You know, when, when you get someone in the house and they sell it four years, five years, eight years later, you know, how does that work? Who manages that? I mean, it seems that for rent is almost always a, I guess, a cleaner approach. But I, but I'm curious your, your experience with for sale and, and how does that work in other markets?
Uh, thank you for the question. It is, uh, again, there are as many different ways that it works as there are places that do it. But the, the typical way is that there is a deed restriction that runs with the property um, that limits the amount that the initial buyer can then turn around and sell the unit for. So that it is not a question, and frankly, some communities learned this the hard way. They said you have to build some for sale housing, and yes, that unit might be worth a million dollars, but you have to sell it for three hundred thousand dollars. And someone effectively wins the lottery because they get that unit at three hundred thousand and there is no resale, resale restriction on it, and they can turn around six months later and sell it for the million dollars that it's worth on the market. So most communities have learned that lesson, uh, or taken tha- that lesson from other places and said, no, we're going to have a deed restriction that limits the, a- a- and it renews with each sale of the property so that it's effectively, uh, in perpetuity, this will remain a, an affordable unit. There are others that kind of split the difference and say, we'll have a, an equity sharing program that if you stay in your unit for a certain period of time, you can start to uh, accumulate the uh, the equity that is building toward market rate. So if you stay in the unit for, for example, five years, then you can sell it at market rate at the end of that five years. But there's essentially a soft second uh, mortgage that the city holds. And the city gets most of that uh, appreciation, but the, the seller uh, can get some of that appreciation. Um, so even if the unit effectively transfers to um, market rate when it is sold, the city gets some of that money back and can reinvest in another affordable unit somewhere. Um, so again, there's lots of different ways to do it. Um, but the, the current standard is effectively trying to maintain the unit in perpetuity through a deed restriction.
Hey, Paul. When the D R Horton folks came back and decided they didn't wanna give us those seven low income housing units, those townhomes for sale, didn't the city have its own consultant do a report explaining how even if they gave away these units for free, the, the occupants wouldn't be able to afford the HOAs, the insurance, and it just wouldn't work?
I think it, very low income.
That was the.
Different income level.
That was the uh, the developer's analysis at that point. They said that uh, even the, even if uh, somebody qualified and, you know, purchased a home, they probably wouldn't afford to, to live in it, maintain, keep paying the HOA fees and so forth.
But that was just from the developer? The city didn't do their own analysis of that?
Yeah, allow, allow me you to interject. Yes, yes, they, Paul's correct. The, the developer did provide that, but we did have our own consultant that reviewed that report and confirmed the uh, the conclusions and the analysis that was contained in it.
Okay, has that been provided to these consultants? It sounds like they're gonna do the same exercise here.
Oh, we'll be happy to provide that to, to EPS. That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Yeah, i- if I may, uh, interject uh, real quickly, it sounds like the analysis in question was regarding the ability for very low income households to afford uh, to maintain a home. And it is pretty uncommon, not unprecedented, but, but comparatively uncommon that uh, that communities would require inclusionary for sale units to be offered at very low income. For probably the very reasons that the previous consultants concluded and the developer concluded, um, that it's, it can be difficult at those very low incomes to properly maintain the cost of, of a home. Um, it is more common that the very low income and low incomes are addressed through an inclusionary requirement on rental housing and that uh, that low and moderate incomes are addressed through inclusionary units on, in for sale housing.
That moderate income level is, what, ninety-five thousand and a purchase price of almost seven hundred? So it's not, nothing. On the, a question about, can you explain how you layer in the state density bonus and the inclusionary housing ordinance? So if there's an inclusionary housing fee, but a developer is going to apply a state density bonus allowance, could they get the density but then ask the city to pay a fee for that instead? Which I guess takes precedent when both exist.
If you are paying a fee, you do not qualify for the state density bonus. You only qualify for the bonus by providing the units onsite within your project. Um, so if that is an option uh, that you wish to pursue, uh, allowing the fee, developers would look at their own project and figure out what works best for them. And they would say, well, we can pay, let's call it twenty dollars a square foot or whatever the number turns out to be for an in lieu fee. Or we can build the units plus get more market rate units through the state's density bonus program. And they, they will decide which is better for them.
And has there been any conversation about the project size that this gets triggered by? You know, if you're building four single family homes or ten apartment units. And I don't, I don't know if we've had that conversation, but kind of what project levels would trigger this?
Right. Well, that again is up to local discretion. Right. Well, that again is up to local discretion. Um, there are places that allow. Uh, projects under, say, ten units to be exempt entirely. There are others that uh require them to pay the fee instead, but not to build a unit onsite. Um, so again, that there's a lot of uh flexibility on what you might choose to do. And many communities will say, well, we don't want, um, you know, a a a single. Uh, household that's putting up a unit for themselves to live in to be subject to this. Um, so we'll exempt small projects, um, but we will want any kind of merchant builder or someone who is building to sell. Uh, to be subject to it, and so they'll think about it in in that kind of way. Um, but again, there's lots of flexibility on uh what s- sizes and types of projects you might choose to apply. As shown on that comparative chart, again, there are some that even locally that require it for rentals, but not for sale. There are increasingly uh throughout the state places that require it for sale and not for rental. Um, so again, lots of discretion.
And so maybe this is a question for the group, you know, given the number of ways to approach this. How do we decide what's right for El Segundo versus Culver City or Santa Monica? Um, I know stakeholders, but can we have maybe an idea of who those people are? The community at large is gonna have a presentation, and then what happens? How does that feedback loop get to staff? Can you walk us through what that outreach might look like?
For uh our process, we haven't exactly designed it yet, but the the way it typically goes. Is that coordinating with city staff, we would identify uh specific types of groups that we would want to make sure we give direct. Uh invitations to in addition to a general call for come to our meeting. Um, to make sure that we have a a variety of perspectives represented, and that can be anywhere from the market rate developers. To uh affordable developers, to housing advocacy groups, uh, to the local. Uh, Chamber of Commerce and other business groups that may be affected in terms of their ability to. Uh, recruit or retain workers based on their ability to live nearby and so forth. So we want to get a variety of perspectives. And in terms of how the feedback ultimately gets channeled into a decision. Frankly, it's more art than science, and it it comes down in many cases to feel. Um, and that's a combination of looking at the numbers that we run on feasibility and seeing. You know, we think that, uh, yes, you can support a project with, let's say, ten percent inclusionary at a certain income level. But twenty percent looks like it, it doesn't work. It's too too great a burden for projects to bear. Many communities end up looking at what their neighbors are doing and saying, well, we want to be um at least as progressive as this group. But we're uh, but not necessarily, uh, you know, Santa Monica or what have you. Um, and so there's some of that as well. And then ultimately, it it comes down to uh a decision about. What other ways you might have to address affordable housing and whether this is a, an important and efficient way to do that. Um, because you definitely need to show the state through your housing element, uh, that you have some plans. For how to get affordable housing in your city and um failing ways to reach those numbers. Through other programs, uh, this is a program that's available to you and and you can look at this as one of the, one of the tools in your tool toolkit.
If I may, uh, just add real quickly to what Darren said. Um, the feasibility and analysis will assist us along that way to at least get to a kind of a, a basic. Number of units that might be exempt. So for example, after we do the feasibility analysis, we might determine that uh for projects that are ten units to the acre. Um, they can afford to provide uh fifteen percent affordable. Well, if you have a ten unit project, fifteen percent is one and a half unit, you know? So, you know, it kind of tells you, you know, uh, that if the project is smaller than that, much smaller than that. You might not be able to get a whole unit out of that, that that will be affordable, right? So, you know, you can expect that, you know, if it's four units or or eight units, it might be hard to apply. Uh, a requirement, um, perhaps a requirement to build the affordable units. It might be hard to do it that way. You might, or the city might decide that, well, on those small projects, maybe we'll uh apply a fee, an in lieu fee. So, uh, the feasibility analysis will help us get there part of the way. But then we'll have an open discussion with all the stakeholders and decide maybe what the right number is for our community.
And uh, can you teach us about the economics of uh, of how that gap is is uh, is covered? You know, what what's the incentive to a developer to offer affordable units? And uh, o- obviously, you know, what's the gap between affordable and market rate? How is that covered?
Uh, Julie, can you go back to the slide that had our uh rents and sale prices? Okay, so I'll I'll give you an example of how this works. If you had, say, just to make the math relatively easy, a hundred, a hundred unit project. Um, I know there may not be hundred unit projects coming your way very often, but to make the math easy, let's try it. On the for sale side, if you could build a hundred townhomes. Um, and each one of them sold for one point one million, which is kind of the going rate right now. That would be what, a hundred and ten million dollars of value. Um, and it might cost you, you know, if the developer is looking for a certain profit margin on the units. It might cost them, let's say, ninety-five million dollars between land acquisition and construction costs and permitting and impact fees and all that. Might cost them ninety-five million dollars to build those hundred uh townhome units. Then they get a fifteen million dollar profit margin. Well, if some of those units have to sell for three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars or five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Instead of one point one million, then your ninety-five million dollars of cost stays the same. But the overall value that you get comes down. And it might not be a hundred and ten million, it might end up being a hundred and two million. And in that case, the profit margin drops from fifteen million dollars to seven million dollars, so roughly half of what it would otherwise have been. Um, and so we need to think about how much is too much. And are there other ways that the project economics could be affected that would allow you to do a program of this nature? Um, without stalling the the development in the first place. So for example, if you can make adjustments to other impact fees. Or if you can streamline the process so that the permitting takes less time and costs less money than it otherwise might. Those might be incentives that you could provide to offset the cost of the inclusionary program. Um, outside of the city's control are questions like, could the, th- the land be purchased for a smaller amount of money? And that depends on what the the landholder's expectations are. I- if they can get uh twenty million dollars for this land for a commercial development, for example. Um, and a, an inclusionary based program for housing would drive its land value down to ten million. Then they would prefer to sell it to a c- a commercial builder. There certainly is a strong economic base in El Segundo that there may be competition from other uh types of development. For the same land. Um, so those are the kinds of things that we need to be thinking about and talking with your community about. Um, what are the, what are the the levers that can be pulled uh to, you know, we, we absolutely said the answer is yes. Uh, these programs do affect project feasibility, and we need to understand and work with you all to understand. Um, you know, how much is too much and what can we reasonably expect, um, so that the outcomes are what you hope for.
Oh, or does the state offer any uh incentives or bonuses, or does the state help pay for any of that, uh, pay for any of that gap?
Not directly for inclusionary housing. Um, there is the density bonus program, and so if, depending on the nature of your inclusionary program. Um, you may automatically qualify for a state density bonus. Um, which provides you the opportunity to build still more uh market rate units, which have higher, high profit margins ten, ten generally. Um, so we would want to keep that in mind is, you know, what i- if we're setting a program like this. Where is the value proposition on the incentive side that may offset the the cost side? Um, and does that equal out? Um, is it, is it as good or almost as good to do a project with inclusionary units? That then takes advantage of the density bonus, is that almost as good uh as doing the project without any inclusionary units? And not getting the density bonus? Um, so again, those are, uh, that's math that we can do, but the decision making uh is more art than than math.
Gotcha. Thank you. So a- a- also, all these pro forma models are are based on new construction. And are there, are there studies or do you guys get into um situations where you're looking at uh using existing? Infrastructure, existing housing stock uh to to try to also meet some of these goals that we're trying to to aim for?
Um, there i- inclusionary is not the tool for that. There are others. Um, you might be able to, for example, if you allow the in lieu fee. Uh, instead of providing units onsite and you collect a fee, you may be able to use that to preserve existing housing. And and uh, you know, put deed restrictions on existing units that would keep them affordable. Um, and that may be better uh for the overall city. It may also be able to take advantage of other sources of funding aside from the new development. You may be able to leverage tax credits or uh other funding from the state or federal level. Um, so there's all kinds of ways that you may be able to address affordable housing through existing housing stock. But inclusionary uh zoning is a tool that only indirectly affects that capability.
One more question for you on regulation, so, and I don't know if this is specific to the inclusionary. Housing ordinance or maybe for staff in general, but who would regulate the affordability of these units for the duration of time? And I'm thinking if you have a ten unit project and it's one unit, that to me seems more expensive and complicated. Than even a hundred unit project with twenty or thirty units. Um, so if you could just walk us through a little bit. Is that burden on the city to follow up and have compliance, or is the developer engaged in that?
Uh, typically, the developer for a a rental project, it is uh the responsibility of the developer. To do the first work on that and do the income qualification so that any, the initial renter and any subsequent renters would be income qualified. Um, but there does absolutely need to be some management uh and administration on the city side. In some communities, depending on the size of uh the program and how many units are in the program. Um, if it's just a handful because you're not getting that much development and you're getting one or two units apiece at a couple of different locations. That can be handled with the existing staff. In other cases, they sometimes hire an an outside consultant to maintain the database and do the follow up and so forth. If they have a uh more of a stock of these types of units, so there's a number of different ways that uh, that you can do it. But you absolutely cannot simply leave it to the developers to maintain that. Because um, they have very little incentive to do that if you're not looking over their shoulder.
Yeah, right. So so is that a, is that a line item in your pro forma? Is uh, uh, maintenance of this program, or is that just something else? Does the city have to kind of figure out what that's going to be?
There are opportunities if you're doing a uh, a project like this. I- if you were doing an impact fee, you can often have a certain proportion of the impact fee go to administration costs. Um, in this case, if you're asking the developers to build the units onsite. Um, there is no way to essentially tax them to then have you uh administer the program in perpetuity. So that just has to come out of the uh other resources that the city would have.
And maybe Paul or Eduardo, you could help answer this, um, or Michael too for that matter. But the, is that something that's been discussed with many mansions as the affordable housing partner? Something that would fall under, you know, their capability or even their contract would be to manage those units?
Yeah, uh, if I may, uh, take that, yeah, many mansions, their agreement with the city does include that particular uh type of work. So, um, in cases, individual projects with a development agreement, for instance. Where we would need to have uh someone do a lot of that work of checking incomes and recertifying units over time. Uh, many mansions could do that for the city. And uh, for instance, that's something that we're considering on one of the projects that we're dealing with uh right now. To uh basically have the developer compensate the city. Uh, or having a, you know, a housing consultant do that work for us. Uh, it's good for the city to a certain extent to have some control over that recertification process. Cause if you leave it entirely on the private party, uh, it might go by the wayside, you know, and they might, they might not do it properly. And then you end up with problems.
So is the idea that these new conditions would apply mostly to that housing overlay zone that the city's working on?
It it can apply only to that housing overlay zone, or it could apply to uh all of our residential zones. Uh, so outside of those overlay areas.
I I don't remember there ever being a project for an apartment building, except for the project that's happening on P C H. Um, in the last ten years. So I'm I'm curious, you know, we go through this exercise to analyze fifty units per acre. For something that hasn't been built in this town, who knows when it was built? So it seems like, are we, are we doing this to try to appease the state and saying, we've got all these great plans, we've got these overlay zones? And maybe in the future, something will happen?
Um, you're right that uh, right now, we we don't have uh zones that have those high densities. Uh, we are considering as part of the housing element to apply these overlays on specific properties. That will have those densities, thirty to uh fifty units per acre. Although there are some other options that we're we're analyzing from lower densities at the twenty units per acre, at the ten units per acre as well. Than cities that apply in other parts of the city. So, uh, we can apply those to different parts of town, like Julie said in her presentation. It could be citywide, all our residential zones, or it could be in certain parts of town where it makes more sense to us.
Uh, what's the status on that overlay zone in the housing element? Is that gonna come back to us before we're asked to approve it? Do we, we, will we see it again, or is this just gonna come back to us right in October and we gotta get it done and send it up to Sacramento?
Uh, that's one of the things that we we would like to discuss uh with uh all all of you. You know, in the individual meetings that we're hoping to schedule with you. But uh, we we hope to bring that uh site inventory to you uh before it's uh time to. Uh, adopt it, uh, so in advance of that. But uh, we will go over those details with you in our individual meetings and and give you a little bit more information on the progress of the housing element.
Okay, but will we have another public meeting and get public comment before it's presented to the planning commission for approval and then sent to city council?
Yeah, we're we're hoping to to squeeze that in so that we can still meet our um, our state sort of deadline. So, um, we are trying to get there, so uh, we're trying to do it as fast as we can. So we have enough time to have another meeting, but uh, it it's very tight right now, so we're trying to do that.
I I know you guys are overwhelmed with doing the jobs of ten people. Um, but I would think it would make sense for us, before we start discussing um this type of program, to know where this overlay zone is. What it looks like and what parts of town it's going to affect, because that might change the conversation. Is that possible, or are we gonna be doing both at the same time? Cause it seems like one has to work with the other.
Yes, and uh, the uh, the housing element has cer- certain deadlines. So, um, the that's basically why our major priority is that is at this point. So, the work on the inclusionary how, inclusionary housing program can follow. Uh, af- you know, after we make decisions on the housing element in the site inventory, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. So this is just the introduction of what the types of programs are. And then as in the future, you'll come back with some more analysis after you've done some feasibility. And we'll have a conversation about, you know, what what kind of fits here in El Segundo. Is that the idea?
Yeah.
And this doesn't have to be done by, there's no deadline on this, right? This is, there's no October hard, okay, okay, so we have time at least, that's nice.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah, so 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 the EPS guys, you you guys are are working on a grant. Yeah, so, so, so the E P S guys, you, you guys are, are working on a grant that, uh? Um, that, that the city got, is that? What, what is the schedule for, for your work? When do you hope to wrap this stuff up?
Uh, it's probably near or around the time that we adopt the housing element, so end of the year or early next year. Um, but, uh? As I mentioned just a minute ago, we're not rushing to do this ahead of the housing element because that will put the cart ahead of the horse, right?
Any other questions?
Well, it's not a question, but maybe just an overreaching, uh, comment. I think we've seen recently that we have a little bit of a history of asking for community input and then whether it's a survey or whether it's? And then it, it sits there and, and maybe the responses are ambiguous or? So my personal opinion is that community outreach has to come with? Um, educational component, we're talking about inclusionary housing ordinance. And this is why communities do that at the start of it because otherwise the data that we get from it is just? Uh, doesn't feel like it furthers the, the conversation. Um, I think we saw a little bit of that with the housing element conversation, you know, there are a lot of notices about? The community should participate and it was posted on the website and then there's? Questions and at the end of it, we go, well, we have to do that, we have to do this anyway by October. So I would just avoid that pitfall here. Um, and it sounds like you have a good team in place, this is not their first time at this, so? Just something to be cautious or conscientious of as we move through the process.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Well, thank you for the presentation, it was very informative and, uh, we look forward to seeing what you come back with next.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, um, next item on the agenda is our report from our director of development services.
Uh, I don't have any formal report, but you know, I just want to thank everybody for, uh? The warm welcome, uh, not exclusive of this team, but, uh, city hall in general, you know, staff has been a? A pleasure, uh, to get to know and, and, uh, start to, to hit the ground running and? I, I'm really looking forward to, to collaborating with, with the commission and? And seeing some of these projects come forward, uh, we've, we've got a, a heavy lift and a heavy load in front of us and that's, uh? It's definitely an exciting place to be, um, and an exciting time to be here. Uh, so I, I'm really looking forward to getting, you know, all of you, uh, better and then all is actually working on these? These, uh, one-on-one meetings will actually will be coincidental because it'll be a good time for us to? To get some individual time to, to talk and, and learn about each other and, and, uh, as, as well as, um? You know, strategize, uh, how we're going to move forward and, and take some of these policies. Uh? In, in what direction we're going to take these policies, uh, particularly this one, it's entirely a policy decision. Uh, this is not something mandated by the state and so? Uh, it's also a good opportunity for me to, to get to know the, the priorities of, of the commission as a whole and? Uh, each of you individually moving forward, as some of you have a, a long tenure here and? And I, my goal is to, to take your vision and, and work with staff and, and make it a reality, so? Looking forward to meeting everybody in person one of these days, hopefully soon, uh? With the, with the remarks that, that the mayor, uh, said that all he did is ask, maybe that's all we need to do, so? I will, I will do that and, uh, we'll, we'll hopefully see you soon.
Well, welcome aboard, you have, uh, landed yourself in a special place here in El Segundo, I'm, I'm sure you'll figure that out where? Everyone wants to tell you how long they've lived here or how many generations they go back, it's truly a special place. You got your work cut out for you? And, uh, as I said before, I'm meeting, uh, the next time I see any member of city council, I will again remind them? Of how much help you need in this department, uh, I know Eduardo? Paul, uh, and Maria have been doing the jobs of twenty people. Um, and the consultants they bring in are great, they're top notch, but the end of the day, our, our goal is to have people who know this city? Do the actual planning and doing this type of analysis because they have this historical background? Of our town and they sat through these meetings with us and listened to this die is disgusting, so? Um, whatever we can do to help you get your department staffed and, and get it running to where we're all working well? I'm, I'm happy to help you in that regard, but welcome aboard.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Yeah, and, uh, I, I too will ask, I'll push for having in-person meetings, I just think it's a, a much better forum for this. All right, next is our report from our city attorney, do you have anything tonight, Greg?
Nothing from me, Ryan, thank you.
Thanks for showing up, okay, planning commissioner comments?
A reminder that, a reminder that the El Segundo Art Walk is the Saturday night in the downtown area.
Yes. And it's just, it's just the one day, right?
One, yeah, only tonight and this Saturday.
Okay, okay, always great. Um, I would like to ask again if the commission could get an, uh, update? On the A D U's in town? The number of A D U's, the sizes of A D U's, locations of A D U's? Uh, and when it's presented, can you give us a document? Spreadsheet, whatever information you're going to present? Include it in the agenda packet? Because in, in tonight's agenda as an example, like the most important thing we just got done talking about? And there are no documents that we can just email out to people who ask, hey, what happened in your meeting? And we gotta say, well, you gotta watch the PowerPoint. Well, we got twenty-five pages about a guy who wants to add a couple more spots for his R V storage place. You know, it's, it seems like these important questions we're talking about, the? Low income housing and how are we going to get it done and how are we going to satisfy the state? Like, we need to be pushing out and like Michelle said, educating people about what's going on. Because if we just show up and you ask us to approve this housing element with all this high density housing, people are going to lose their minds. It, it's, it's not going to be pretty and we all know because we've been educated that we have to do this? Or bad things will happen, but we need to use, you know, the information we have? To make sure the town and everyone we know kind of understands what's happening. So I would ask, you know, when we have something like this housing bump, even if you just put the? The slideshow that they had, their PowerPoint, included with the agenda packet? And then it's always available if anyone wants to go back and flip through those slides, you know, that, that too is helpful. Um, so just food for thought when we're talking about these big issues, tr- try to, try to give us some documentation? That we can look to, so for this A D U, you know, uh? I don't need a long report, but I want to keep track of this maybe on a quarterly basis to see? How, how is this affecting our town, where are these going, what are these things looking like? Because, um, I'm hearing grievances. And, you know, it's, it, it's, it's something that we need to address before it becomes a problem. All right?
So, no, no, noted and I'll, I'll go ahead and put, prepare something for, for the next, um, uh, commission agenda. I know that the last time we reported back to you all was, um, the la- um, at the end of, of last year, so yeah, it's? It's, we're, we're come due for another, um, briefing to, 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 to the commission on the number of? Of, um, of A D U's throughout town, so I'll, I'll prepare something for the next meeting.
And I hate, I hate putting more work on your shoulders, Eduardo, I know how hard you're working.
That's right, so we're here for it.
All right. Any other comments, guys?
Okay, I may, uh?
Yeah.
I may, uh, commissioner, I just wanted to give a couple of your reminder? If you could please, uh, send me your availability for, uh, next week? Uh, to schedule some, um, uh, one-on-one meetings with you to go over that site inventory and answer any questions you have on the? Housing element, uh, that'd be great because we're really trying to squeeze all those meetings in next week, so if you could, uh? Send your availability, I'd appreciate it.
Great. And, and, and Paul, to that end, uh, I sent you a couple of dates. Uh, I, I am, uh, I do need to be out of town a couple of days next week, so the earlier in the week that you could schedule me? Would be great if that, if that works for you.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
The earlier in the week is, uh, better for us as well.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Hey, thank you.
All right, guys, that brings us to adjournment, our next meeting will be September ninth? Two thousand twenty at five thirty and who knows, maybe hopefully in person?
Hey!
There's always hope.
Yep.
All right, take care, everybody.
All right, thanks everybody, have a good night.
Bye-bye.